Sergeant Major Kent, his wife Liz, and Bonnie and I, my wife, spent eight hours on Saturday at Bethesda. They've got a lot of wounded Marines now in hospital. So it's not without cost. But we are going to finish the mission, and we're doing really, really well. And you'd be very proud of your brothers and sisters that are in Afghanistan. We're going to rebalance our Marine Corps. There's an effort underway right here at Quantico. It is fairly closely held. That's about, I don't know, maybe 100 very senior and bright Marines of every background that are working what we call a force structure review group. And that's an effort that we've been directed by the Secretary of Defense and by the Secretary of the Navy to do. And we're going to look at reshaping the Marine Corps post-Afghanistan. What does the Marine Corps need to look like when we come out of Afghanistan? How big should it be? We've advanced a lot of technology. We've learned an awful lot in eight years. How do we apply those lessons to force structure, the kind of equipment? How big, how small? There's going to be some dramatic changes. We're looking at all active-duty units, everyone. It doesn't matter whether you're a future Joint Strike Fighter, whether you're an infantry battalion, whether you're combat logistics, it doesn't matter. Whether you're a B-22 squadron, or whether you're an attacker or an artillery, it doesn't matter. We're looking at 100% of all units. We're looking at 100% of our headquarters. Bases, stations, MEFs, divisions, MLGs, wings, our regional headquarters, we're looking at it all. And then we're looking at all 39,400 reserves. What does the reserves need to look like? I mean, what do we need? We need capabilities in the reserves. So what should they look like, and what is their real mission? And finally, we'll look at 100% of our civilian Marine man structure. So that effort will report out in late December to meet. I'm working with them every week, I meet with them. Lots of hands-on, player-coach kind of stuff. And I'll report to the Secretary of the Navy and Secretary of Defense in June. We're going to reshape the Marine Corps. We're going to better educate our Marines. For those of you there at the Marine Corps University, I don't see General Neller down here, you'd better show up. Marine Corps University might chastise him. But it doesn't mean we're not doing a great job in our schools, because we are. I think we've got probably the best resident P in the area, but we can do better. I've watched for years that we only have one commandant staff last year. Yet we say, we tell all our majors, this is really important. Now, we're going to change that. I watched, every year I had his job, and I became acting, as we pulled captains out of expeditionary warfare school around March and April so that they could go to Mojave Black, so they could join their battalions and train, so they could become company commanders, so they could deploy in Iraq, Afghanistan. And we did that because we had one captain's course every year. We're beyond that now. So we're going to change that. We're going to double the numbers of majors going through, we're going to triple the numbers of captains going through. It's going to be a combination of things like some distance learning to begin with, and then preparation, and then coming to residence school. It's expensive. All the money guys are going to say, "You can't do it. It's too expensive. We've tried it before. It won't work." What about PCFs? What about families? What about, what about, what about? And I'm telling you, I'm going to blow right over the top. We'll figure out how to do it smart. We're going to do it the right way. I've got a very high priority on NCO training. Very, very high priority. We're going to change that. We're going to make that better than it is. It's good, but we're going to make it better. So education is a big part of me. And then finally, we're going to keep faith with our Marines and our families and our sailors. That deals with everything from things like family readiness to care for our wounded. We are legendary in the Department of Defense on the care for our wounded. Legendary. We set the bar, and we continue to set the bar. And you have my personal promise that this is, that this will continue. So we're going to continue to take care of our families. There's a lot of things we can do to take care of our Marines, and we'll talk about some of those, next slide. Okay, just a couple of things. I'll let each one of those, and then we'll get to questions. And by the way, be thinking about what you might want to ask Sergeant Major Kent about. We're going to, you know cohesion is important. I've watched it now, I've watched these last-minute fills with the right leaders, and it just absolutely tears you apart. I mean, that's not the way we ought to do this. We've learned differently, and we're going to fix that. So I'm not sure how we're going to fix it, but we're going to fix it, and I've already got some folks working on that thing. Resiliency training, talked to General Dunford when he was Marson, one MEB, four or five months ago. The whole concept of, how do you build a Marine? How do you shape a Marine? How do you train a Marine? How do you make him or her more resilient? Well, what does that mean? Does that mean that we're not tough in combat? No, that's not what I'm talking about. This is, that's not what I'm talking about. But how do you make a Marine able to cope with the stuff that's going on? First of all, we've got the best Marines we've ever had. We trained them better than we've ever trained them before. And they're absolutely, you know, almost every one of you in here are part of the millennial generation. Folks are wringing their hands over the millennial generation, "Oh, shoot, they're not going to be courageous, they're not going to, they're going to be self-centered, they're not going to worry about, it's all going to be me." That couldn't be farther from the truth. That could not be farther from the truth. Our Marines are absolutely selfless, and they are absolutely fearless. That is not the issue. Though since they're trained hard, they still come in droves to us. If you signed up today to be a Marine, it'd be eight months before you could check into parasailing understanding. Eight months. We've got no problem recruiting quality Marines. We've got no problem retaining quality Marines. That's not the issue. So they're fearless, they're smart, they're selfless, they're willing to deploy again and again and go in harm's way, they're willing to work long hours in the Pentagon, they're willing to work long hours in Quantico. That is not the issue, Marines. What causes a young Marine to just unravel because of something he or she has seen in combat? What causes young Marines to say, "You know, I can't take it anymore," and decide to go down a path where they're willing to take their own life? How does that happen? I don't know. But I think there are things that we can do. I think immersion training that we're doing, both Quantico and Quantico, immersion training like we're doing out at Camp Pendleton, immersion training that we're building down at Camp Deserment, at our bases, that's part of it. But there's more. How do we build coping skills for our young Marines such that when something happens in their life, it could be INJP, it could be I got caught doing something really stupid, and I disappointed myself, I disappointed my fellow Marines, maybe I disappointed my wife, maybe I disappointed my parents, and I'm going to suck it up and deal with it. I'm not going to think about going off someplace and taking my life. How do you build those coping skills? That's what this is all about. It's more than just suicide. It's coping skills for combat. You take some young, your best friend, and he dies in your arms. How do you deal with that? So we're going to work very hard on that. I've done, I'm fed up with having what we call low-density, high-demand. We've done it now for eight years. You know, we keep picking these, some of these unique MOSSes, and we send them back-to-back-to-back-to-back. And why is that? Because we haven't built any more of them. We're going to make all these low-density, high-demand asset MOSSs into high-density, high-demand. We're going to solve that. That'll be easy, next slide. We've got to rebalance the Corps. I've already talked about the force structure review group. That environment that I talked about just supports the whole concept of a regular worker. That's what, we've got a lot of organizations right now that we have built in the Marine Corps, all in good faith, all of them for the right reasons, all kind of focusing different aspects of a regular worker. I think we can consolidate that, I think we should, and we can figure out what it is we ought to be doing. That bullet on Marsoc down there, that sub-bullet, I'm a big Marsoc fan. I think we backed up to the table on Marsoc now. I was at Quant at the Legion, I was a CG down there, two MEF. I gave up my force recon guys, and they went over, and they were the initial Marsoc. And voila. I was there when the deals were struck between General Hagie and General Brown. I know everything about how we got to where we are today. My sense is, is that we have been in denial on Marsoc. We've got 2,500 young Marines, and their docs, their corpsmen that are down there at Camp Deserment and out of Pendleton, and they are doing fantastic work. They're Marines. They're Marines first, and they do special operations second. They don't run around in black T-shirts, they don't run around in beards. They better not. But they're Marines, and they do some incredible things. I'm very proud. I sing a routine. It's interesting, when I visited with General on Sergeant Major Kent, I visited, in the hospital, they're real fast. This is not physical or something, it's mine. So they're doing, I'm a big fan of this. There's some things we need to do to bring them back into the brotherhood, right, bring them back into this thing called Marine Corps. And there's some things we need to provide to make sure that they're successful. We're going to lighten that up. We've talked now, testimony for the last two years, and we've, we keep saying, we've got too heavy. We can't even get aboard ship anymore. We've got fat. Our equipment's heavy, we've got 30-ton MRAMs. I mean, a lot of this stuff happened out of good, it just happened. But a good example of how we're going to lighten the load is all that we went through when we built the new modular tactical vest, and General Brogram was down here, and how we got to worrying about ounces. And then we went to the plate carrier for Afghanistan. Very, very successful. Very successful. That lighted load. I was viewing a piece of heavy, a piece of equipment by a sister service, and I was wearing it not too long ago, and I'd been encouraged to put this piece of gear on, I'm not going to tell you what service or what, but I put this on, and it was pretty cosmic. I mean, it had a lot of electronic stuff on there, and I'm wearing it, and I got it on my head, and I'm looking at it stuff, and I'm kind of a technology guy, so I like this. I'm thinking, this is really cool. It weighed 13 and 1/2 pounds. But let me get this right. I've got a modular tactical vest that weighs, how much am I, 39, 38 pounds? I've got a modular tactical vest that protects the front of me, the back of me, I put side safety plates on, because I want to come home. It weighs 38 pounds. And then I'm going to put my ammunition on there, by the way. You can never have enough ammunition. So you, you see Marines as stacks and stacks of ammunition. And then you put water, and then you put all the, so you end up with 65 pounds. And I'm going to put 13 and 1/2 pounds, so I can have this cosmic little doodah that will give me complete situational awareness. We're not doing it. I went out last month and fired, now all the infantry guys in here are going to choke, okay? I went out and I fired an infantry assault rifle out of weapons training battalion. Now remember, I'm a fighter pilot, so I know you don't, I'm not even supposed to touch a weapon unless it's a 2,000-pound bomb. I got that. And I went out, and this thing could, you notice I didn't say would, could replace assault. It weighs half as much. Now Marines, that is lightening the load. So we're going to work real hard on this. By the way, it's a great weapon. You know, if any of you guys sitting here have not fired that weapon, you need to do that, because your fighter pilot old man here is going to, and even I could put it about that much, 500 yards with that. It's an incredible weapon. Okay. So we're going to lighten the load, we're going to work, General Dunford's going to chair aboard, everything's important, we buy everything. If it's a new helmet, if it's a, whatever, it's going to come through the process the way it normally does, and the last cleared authority will be this board. And we're going to stick our nose in cyber space operations. General Flynn is commander of that. And the fact that all you do is text now, and the fact that patients are trying to get into our websites by thousands of times every day requires us to be smart. It's next slide. Okay, we're going to invest in NCOs and junior officers. This is, you know, we're going to prepare Marines for distributed operations. By the way, we are, I mean, we've done really well. We've got sergeants now owning balance base and controlling Marines in places that platoon commanders and company commanders used to, used to deal with. So we're going to, we're going to invest heavily in our NCO training. This thing down there, SAP, that's a special education program that goes on and moderates for our officers. We're going to work on that, foreign area officer, regional area officer, and fellowships. We take a young Marine, usually after a mentor, we send them to moderate. They go for their, they get an advanced degree, they become a foreign area, then we send them over to the Defense Language Institute, and they learn a language. They become experts in their areas. And their value add, and then we don't promote them. How does that happen? Now, why did we spend a billion dollars to educate this Marine, and he's value-added or she's value-added, and then we don't promote them? We're going to change that. Values-based training, General Flynn started it when he was a two-star down here at Army Education Command. That's an offshoot to how do we get to our moral fiber that causes us to make right decisions? We instituted it at boot camp, we got it at school mentorship. That is so critically important to who we are, that we're going to, we're going to ankle, we're going to put that in Marine Corps University, we're going to elevate that up through our education system. Finally, the last thing on there is General Wilhelm, in 2006, brought a bunch of general officers together, really, really smart, really smart folks. And they met for a year and a half, and the question asked them was, "How do you turn Marine Corps University into a world-class facility and organization?" Right now, we've got great teachers, they do great work, our instruction is super. That's not the issue. But there were, I think, four or five, there are over four or five major recommendations coming out of that, what we call the Wilhelm Study. And we are going to, and they're great. One is to update our IT network and actually kind of get us to the 21st century. One is to double the size of our facilities and modernize. General Gray built that facility over there, he did it very quickly, and it was, it absolutely changed the image of Marine Corps University. It put the Marine Corps University on the map. We're going to do that, we're going to double the size, or maybe even triple the size of that facility. We've already got money in the budget to do it, and we're going to do it. That'll be done at the end of my four years as being the 35th Commandant. I'm dedicated to doing that. So all of those of you that are Marine Corps University, tighten your seatbelt. Next slide. Last one on here is keeping faith. Talked about the wounded warrior regiments, those things, plus traumatic stress, I could tell you story after story, TBI, there's a, we're going to, we're going to continue to work on that, there's no easy solution. I'm going to go back through the family readiness programs. We've just, we, we put a lot of effort in that in the last eight to nine years, and we've got a lot of programs. We're going to go through and take a solid review about what really works, what doesn't, what's needed, if there's more that's needed, we're going to, we'll do that. We're going to, this is not about efficiencies on this thing, it's about effectiveness. So we're going to do our best to go through that, and we're going to take a hard look at our single Marine program while we're going through that. The third bullet on there. Marines, we've worked for the last four years to try to have the face of the American population on this ECU University. And we've not met the mark. And I'm not sure why, but we've not met the mark. We're going to fix that. I don't know what the solution is. We're putting together some smart people to help us. As I sit down, I look at formations, and in my mind, they don't reflect the American people, the population. And that's not good for us. This is not going to be closed. This is not going to be, this is not going to be lower than standards. Right now, we've got 98% of our Marines coming in are high school graduates. This is not going to be lower than mental group standards. None of that. We don't have to do that. But we got to figure out how the world's greatest warfighting organization that only needs less than 1/10 of 1% of the entire American population, what have we got to do to recruit the Marines from diverse ethnic and racial backgrounds? How do I do that? We're going to figure it out, because I'm not satisfied with where we are. Transition assistance. I got to tell you, we've not met the mark in this. I've watched it, I've watched it when I was a captain. I've sat in on some of the classes. We have failed Marines. General Kerlake was a commandant. He said, "Marine Corps does a couple of things. One, we make Marines. Two, we win our nation's battles. And the third thing General Kerlake says is, we return back to America, young men and women, that are better than when they joined the Corps, and we return them back to society, to their homes, to their families, to their churches, to their organizations, and they're better off." That's the part where we're failing. Now, we return great Marines back, that's not the issue. But we can do better. How do we find all these Marines that are homeless? How does that happen? How do we find Marines that are, that don't have jobs? They finish a great tour in Marine Corps, and they don't have a job when they get out? Or they don't have any path they're going to follow down to get them to the next part of, how does that happen? We're failing. I'm just telling you. We're going to fix that. This right effort, it's already begun. General Larson started it about a year and a half ago. We're going to try this completely upside down. We're going to integrate the behavioral health part of this thing, by behavioral health, I'm talking suicides, sexual assault, those kinds of issues. They were always there, but now have kind of come to the forefront. We're going to put our arms around those, and we're going to, not a man will prevent it from now. But we're going to, we're going to do our best as a Marine Corps, help fix that, help turn those around. That's the big effort. And finally, for all you admin Marines in here, the IPAC. There's several staff NCOs in here that love the IPAC. So what I'm about to say, they're going to choke. I'm telling you that one of the things that rang out loud and clear from the senior leadership of the Marine Corps was the manner of small-unit leadership. Sergeants major, first sergeants, master sergeants said, "You know, sir, I can't, for me to get a record book to even see what's in a Marine's record on, is page 11, or any part, any aspect about that Marine. I've got to get in, I got to either get on my bike, my bike, or I got to get in my car, and I've got to drive across base, and I got to stand in line, and I got to go, 'Can I have a record book on Lance Corporal Williams?'" You're not going to do that. So there's pieces of IPACs that, so if you love IPAC, don't have no fear, you're going to have a job. But I've listened to the leadership of the Marine Corps, and we're going to pull out that pieces of IPAC that belong in a small unit, so that our small-unit leaders can do their job. Okay, next slide. I think that's it. All right. That's it in a nutshell, there's a whole lot of it. Please, if you haven't read it, all you Lance Corporal PFC advisors that are out there, get online and take it, please. I'm setting up a website, it's actually built, I think we're going to, we're going to hit send this week, and that'll be my effort to stay plugged into the Marine Corps. I'll have, I'll have stuff on it that are important to me, I'll be able to talk to all commanders, all the sergeants major, all the military readiness officers, I'll be able to talk to groups all around Marine Corps when it just hits send. It's designed so that it can enter what we call the social networking thing on the backside of it, if we end up having, in Facebook, your Facebook accounts and all that stuff. So it's all there, and we'll hit send on that, I think, this one. So that's that, that's what's important to us as a Corps, that's where we are headed. And I'll think about your question before I do. I want to give the microphone to our main speaker.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Good morning, Marines, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, let me just start off saying that it's an easy transition from the 34th Commandant to the 35th Commandant. Because General Amos' focus is the same as the 34th Commandant. It's to take care of Marine sailors and their families. And I have served with General Amos from the past. He is a warrior, and I can tell you, we were at the hospital visiting the wounded warriors on, sir, him and his lovely wife, Lani. And it was one Marine asked him, "Sir, will you allow me to stay in the Marine Corps?" Missed both of his legs. And the commandant looked him right in the eye. He said, "Marine, you have no words. That's my promise to you, that you will be allowed to stay in the Marine Corps." That's the type of commandant he is, because he's totally focused on you and your families. So Marine Corps is going to go to the next level under General Amos. And it's just honor, you know, for me and Liz to finish off our tour over the next six months with General Amos and Mrs. Amos. You know, Marines, we are different as Marines, and you know that. I don't have to tell you, because each and every one of you got that brand in your heart when you earned that title, the United States Marine. Well, I can also tell you, there's other people that want to be like you, but they cannot be like you. I can remember those recruits that were to my right and left in boot camp over 30 years ago. Some of them did not make it through and earn the title. And it's other services that's doing great things for this nation, and they truly are doing great things for this nation, but they are not a United States Marine Corps. And let me give you one example of this, and it's not to slam the US Army, because we love the US Army. We have fought next to them in combat. But as you see this poster here, about three years ago, we were visiting warriors out at Camp Pendleton, and they followed this poster, they said, "Sir, Major, yet, have you seen this poster? It's a recruiting poster from the Army, signed by this one." And I started laughing when I seen it. I said, "No, I, I said, now, tell me, is this a joke?" They said, "No, Sergeant, we want to sign this poster, give it to you, then you go to the Army website, and you'll see it." And I did, and it's a true poster, and the poster read, "Sometimes the best soldier for the job is a Marine." And you wonder why that poster is folded up and I taped it up over the last three years, because I don't want to misplace it. I fold it up every night and put it under my pillow. And my wife, Liz, always say, "Why are you doing it?" Because every morning, I roll out the bed, drop to my knees with that poster on in my hand, and thank God that I'm a United States Marine. The Marine Corps is in great shape for many, many years to come, and it's because of Marines like you. You talk to some of our veterans from foreign wars, matter of fact, one of them lives south up here, Sergeant Major Black. He's the oldest living Sergeant Major Marine Corps. He was number seven. And last year, we went to celebrate the birthday with him on November 10. Took the birthday to his house. And when we went down, we took a bunch of Marines from the Pentagon, took the commandant's message, had a youngest Marine, and quite naturally, you know who the oldest Marine was? It was Sergeant Major Black. But he got emotional. Now, this is a Marine that fought and that chose, with chest and pulling, and also two tours in Vietnam. And he said, "Sir, Major Kent, whenever you and the commandant speak to those great Marines today, you tell them that we are extremely proud of what they're doing for our Corps and our nation." And he cajoled that by saying, "In most cases, they are even better than us." So I'm passing that to you, because this November, the 10th- So I'm passing that to you, because this November, the 10th, we will roll right back down to his house, and we will celebrate the birthday. And he's gonna say the same thing every time I go down to visit him. He always wants me to tell him. And he's not the only veteran that's proud of you. All Marine veterans are proud of what you do. So the Marine Corps is in great shape, because we have Marines reenlisting every day at the highest rate that we have ever seen in our time as Marines. And they're reenlisting not just to take a break, they are reenlisting to continue to deploy, deploy, and deploy. That says a lot about our Marine Corps today. And the recruiters are continuing this legacy, because they're putting quality individuals in, that will graduate boot camp, earn a title, go to SOI, go to the schoolhouses, and then come out to you. And you will continue to mentor them, so they can be just like you. So again, you know, it's just an honor, you know, for us to be here with you today.